The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
I get the call that there's a special board meeting to order.
It's Internet.
And if somebody has a motion for them, I'll entertain the first motion.
I move that the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in amount not to exceed $10 million pursuant to Section 67.12 A, Part 8, Wisconsin statutes be approved.
Second.
No, I think Alan, do you want to present?
Again, we talked a little bit about this at the budget meeting. This is our annual short-term cash flow borrowing. The amount is $10 million, which is the same amount for the third year. The interest rate is at .69% versus the .58 last year. So we would be looking for the board approval tonight to get us through again because of the property taxes being, you know, CME till January. The state aid payments are September and December and March and June. So not unusual for districts to short-term borrow. And again, this is $10 million, the same amount for the last three years.
Anybody have questions for Alan? He's used to doing this, this kind of here. All right, if more questions, Sandy, welcome.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Bleck.
Aye.
Carried six zero. I'll entertain the next motion.
I move that the employment of Jennifer Hades as district equity coordinator at the district office building, 12 months effective November 5th, 2013, is presented, be approved.
Second.
Well, do you go whole vote and then you say something?
Yeah.
We can vote and then we can return.
All right, Sandy, go ahead.
Bleck.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Carried six zero. And I know Jennifer's in the audience.
Yes, she is, if you want, you please stand. Jennifer comes to us, actually Jennifer started her career here in Green Bay. She was a learning disabilities teacher and worked at Eisenhower, is that correct? And the director of special education internships here. And then moved to Albany, Georgia, and then most recently moved to Ohio where she was a special education teacher in the electronic classroom of tomorrow, which is...
ECA?
ECA.
Online education.
Online education, so she'll be starting actually tomorrow.
Great.
You don't waste any time.
If I could, I think I would be remiss, I know that Jennifer actually worked in the area of equity when she served here under Dr. Neerhead, is that accurate as well? I know that, I believe Tom Joynt was superintendent at the time, but Dan Neerhead was responsible and she worked with him in partnership. And she does have quite a few significant ties here still in Green Bay. So we are looking forward to and very appreciative and delighted to have Jennifer join us.
And then welcome back.
Yes, welcome back home.
All right, and then the last motion?
I move that the resignations of staff listed be approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Sandy.
Becker.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Bleck.
Aye.
Carried five zero. That concludes the special board meeting. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we'll adjourn and begin our work session meeting at 5:30. I'd like to call the work session to order. I'd like to note that six out of the seven board members are present. Chris Wagner is excused. And I'm also joined at the table by... The intercity student council members, Priyanka Navani, who's the president of InterCity Student Council, she's representing Preble High School, and Luli Martinez Cruz, did I say that right? Who is from East High School, also a member of InterCity Student Council. Dr. Michelle Angenfeld to my left, Sandy Howler, our board secretary, and then members of our district office administration staff are wrapped around the rest of the table. First, actually, I'll open it up for an open forum. We usually start with that. It's time for members of our community to speak before the board. And I don't have any forms to fill out, but if there's anyone who would like to speak before the board, indicate that now. All right, otherwise, we will move to our first agenda item. Actually, we'll move to the teaching and learning work session, which will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We will not be discussing our first item because I understand that teacher received a better offer and is going to the Packer game. It's a good cultural experience and an exchange teacher.
She's from Mexico.
She's from Mexico. Welcome to Green Bay.
You need to know our culture.
Yes. So we will move right along to the BayLink manufacturing presentation.
And I'm just going to get started and let Lori do most of the talking initially. But what we'd like to share with you tonight and then answer any questions that you have of our team who's gathered behind us, is a proposal to start BayLink manufacturing at West High School. We've kind of let you know a little bit about some of the homework that we've been doing, looking at starting to develop a manufacturing pathway. And this would be a good first step. So we'll let you kind of walk through our proposal, introduce our group behind us, and then answer any questions that you have. So Lori?
Okay, so I'm going to start by telling you a story. Two years ago, I went and saw Mark Kaiser, who is sitting behind me. Mark, if you could... We tell this story everywhere we go.
He looks like he's hurt.
Right. Only he tells it better, I should really let him tell it. And I went to, I'll be honest, I was whining about how we had all these great kids within our school district and we couldn't find work-based learning for them. And, you know, oh woes wows me a little bit. Mark tells the story that I really let him have it. I don't, I don't think it was that bad. And after about a 20 or 30 minute conversation, he said to me, "What do you want?" And I didn't have an answer. So over the course of about a year, I was doing a lot of research on how to support our students getting on a career pathway to manufacturing, whether that was a two-year technical college degree or a four-year college degree. And happened to be in Madison almost a year and a half ago and saw a best practice of a manufacturing job shop at Alieva Strum High School, which is on the other side of the state, and thought, "That's it. That's what we need in Green Bay." So I went back to Mark with my iPad and said, "Watch this video." And I think within about 30 seconds, he said, "Yep, I'm in. What do you, how do we make this happen?" So what's happened in that period of time, in the course of a little over a year, we've done a lot of research and a lot of discovery on what it would take to develop a manufacturing job shop at one of our high schools. And through that process, we have selected West High School. And if you have more questions on how we selected West, we can tell you. What a manufacturing job shop does, and now I'm going to need a little help maybe, is, I'm going to use the word widget, which, I'm sorry. But let's just say that Mark needs 40 widgets on something that he is making for a client. Well, for him to set up a machine to make those 40 widgets is not cost-effective. However, at West High School, where we could set up what we need to make that machine, it would be very cost-effective for us, and we could make a little money on it because he would pay us to do that. And we both win. Also, our students would be learning skills like welding, metals, machining, blueprint reading, so that they are prepared for a career in manufacturing. So that is the proposal that we're bringing to you today. We would like to spend the rest of this year preparing and then have a grand kickoff of BayLink manufacturing, which would be in October of next year to coincide with manufacturing month.
Can you introduce your team?
Sure. Can I have them introduce themselves? What do you want to start in?
Hello. It's such a pleasure to be here with you today. And I just want to say, wow, you have an awesome person in Lori. She's truly passionate. And she, what she says, she gets done. And so, thank you, Lori. You really are amazing woman and just a pleasure to work with. I'm Anne Franz. I'm the strategic partnerships manager at Northeast Wisconsin Technical College, and I serve as the director for the Northeast Wisconsin Manufacturing Alliance.
I'm Mark Kaiser. I'm the president of Lundquist Machine Corporation, and I'm also the current chair of the N E W Manufacturing Alliance.
I'm Joe Frath, and the president of Northeast Wisconsin Technical College.
Andy Belangi, I'm the CTE leader for the Technology Management Education, and I'm also at West High School.
Brooke Ober, coordinator of K-12 rotations at NWTC.
Mark Weber, Dean of Trades in Engineering Technologies at NWTC.
I'm Mike.
So what questions can we answer for you?
Just, could you speak to how you got to this point? You had incredible working groups and lots of people involved.
We developed a discovery team to discover if this was possible. And about a dozen of us got in a bunch of vans and we went over to Alieva Strum High School, that's how it started, and spent an afternoon there with their instructor and their students. And got in the van and the first thing that Mark Weber said was, "That guy is a genius." And the three and a half hour ride back was talking about how would this work in Green Bay and what would it take? So the discovery team actually developed four subcommittees. One was location, one was equipment, one was curriculum, and the other was where are we going to find the money to be able to support this endeavor? And so those committees have been working over the course of the last year to do this discovery work. So a lot of that is already outlined in the proposal that you have in front of you. So we feel like we have really done our due diligence. There's a lot more work to do. One of those being, as you've seen by the report, that we do need community partnerships and support for equipment and facility upgrade in order for us to move forward. But I feel like we're in a really good place. I feel like everybody on this side of the table is all in. So we just are coming to you to ask for you to support this endeavor.
So you did a site visit. What do you feel particularly aligned with what they're doing and what they're proposing for Green Bay?
Well, we, one of our, one of the items on our, one of our vision cards, vision card is to make sure that every student is on a career pathway. And there are a number of students within our district that are very hands-on types of learners. And couple that with the fact that one in four jobs is in manufacturing and they need those hands-on type skills, it just is a good match for these kids that really want that hands-on experience. So we felt like that really worked well for our students in the Green Bay Public School District. And keep in mind, while we're talking about the location being at West, we see this as a district program. So students could come from any of the high schools or JADOL to this program.
It also has the potential to be more interdisciplinary than I think people realize. So for example, at Alieva Strum, they have a young lady who was in business courses who actually was running the business side of the job shop. So she was taking care of all of the invoices, she was ordering all of the supplies, she was delivering and mailing. So they were able to reach across another content area. And the other thing that I think impressed me the most was the, the whole building really kind of owned the job shop. Math, language arts. Instead of the instructor answering the questions for the students when they had one, he would say, "You need to go talk to your language arts teacher about that." Or, "Go find the math teacher and he can help you figure that out." So I think he intentionally found a way to engage the other content areas. And then in addition, in addition, we're able to spread it out into different departments. So.
Would this be a credit course? Would it be during the school day or perhaps after? And if it's during the school year, would it be at a time where it would be easier for students at our other high schools to attend? Because I know a lot of times, students don't go to another high school because of the travel time and they lose a period class.
Our vision is that this would be a three-hour block, six, seventh, and eighth hour. And the reason we chose the end of the day is if they're working on a project that they haven't yet completed, you know, the teacher is there at least until 3:45. The reason that NWTC is at the table is because we also, well, we want to offer dual credits. So we want the student to be able to earn high school credit and NWTC credit at the same time.
So if there's a three-hour block, do the students still have enough periods in a day to fulfill all their other requirements?
Yes, they do, because we really see this as a program for juniors and seniors.
Okay.
And they're going to need to take some prerequisite courses along the way to be able to be prepared to enter BayLink manufacturing. There will be an application process. Students will have to apply, they will have to interview. We've talked about a small portfolio. So it's not just I register and I show up and here I am. Students are going to have to be prepared for this because they are going to be working for other businesses.
So will it be competitive to get in?
It will be competitive to get in.
Any other? Brenda?
I think you mentioned that this being a program for 12 to 15 students, is that correct?
Initially.
Oh, that was only my question, is that, I guess I was curious how big Elieva Strum's is and what hand or how, you know, the capacity that you think this program has for growth?
I think they had about 15 students in there the day that we visited. And I think that, we've talked about summer, the ability for this to run through the summer two to three days, because you can't just say, "You know what, we're happy to take all of your orders for nine months." But then after that...
I was going to ask a question, because widgets in July.
I worry. I think the other two things that probably stick out is, one, I think there's ways to involve our other high schools without them actually traveling to West. So for example, if there's a job that West can't do because they don't have the welding equipment, we could subcontract with Southwest who has the welding equipment or Preble. So I think we can see that spidering out. The other piece is, it's really about teaching the kids about profit sharing and learning to run a business as well. So I remember our visit that day and the kids were spending a rather large amount of time measuring and re-measuring and then making sure that their instructor came over to make sure they were right. Because if they cut that piece of sheet metal or whatever it is that they're cutting wrong, it comes out of their profits. So I think it's a good way for them to learn life lessons as well around making sure we do things well, making sure we know, because they don't just get another sheet. It has to come from somewhere and then they have to, it has to come out of their profit sharing. So I think that's the other life lesson that comes with it. And I think we were pretty impressed with how professional the kids were and how on task they were. The whole time their instructor was showing us around, they were really doing what they needed to be doing without a whole lot of guidance from their instructor. So.
As we think about the rigor for the courses needed to be successful in this particular job shop, how will we communicate? There is sometimes, folks don't recognize that technical skills and work in this area requires some pretty rigorous coursework. How do we communicate that so I don't come my junior year and say, "Well, no, I just want to take this and it's a fun job." How do, what kind of coursework will the students have to have to prepare for this rigorous opportunity?
Andy, can I turn to you for that?
As far as the technical classes or core classes as a whole?
Core classes in preparation for getting into this job shop opportunity.
I don't remember exactly the plan we laid out, but I know we at least, those are the one geometry, because a lot of that does play a role in machining and laying out things. As far as the technical courses, we're looking at creating a new course to help get the students better prepared and then they will have, which will be like a general metals course. And then they will have to take our current machine tool course and/or our current welding course, which we are in the act. So when they come in, they are fully prepared to get to work.
So a very strong mathematics background?
Yes.
As well as other technical skills as well coming in?
Correct.
And will you require any kind of work readiness skills or will there be any preparation for work readiness so that they know how to work as a team? And I mean, this is...
Well, one of the assessment tools that we plan to use is the work keys that they would take prior to being selected to work in the job shop. Not that it will be a total, that that will be the only thing that we will measure because there will be an application and an interview. And then we plan to also use that as the assessment after so that we can measure skill development over the period of the people that are involved.
The other nice tie to West is that if you go and explore what's happening with IB, they are starting to explore a CTE, Career and Technical Education Diploma. So there's an avenue for IB and CTE to come together nicely as well. Something that probably will be coming down the road. I don't think we're quite ready yet. Where's Mark? It's definitely something that we learned about when we were there for a district conference last year. So I do think there's a nice, nice fit there as well.
Celeste?
Thanks. So just a couple of things. Excuse me. So Kim and I, you and I just, you and I had discussed the facilities upgrade. And just wanted to know, the question I'd asked about the facilities upgrade is that there are some upgrades that we would do that already needed to be done. And then there are some upgrades that would need to take place in order to do this program alone. And so, when do you think we have that broken out for us?
Mike?
Well, the facility, the cost that we're in, and most of them are being done for this program because we're going to be doing the venting system, electrical upgrades for the equipment that they're bringing in, moving some of the old equipment. And there's a lot that they're reusing, like the welding booths are going to pretty much remain the way they are. So a majority of this will be because of...
Just for the program. So then, then that gets back to one of my concerns was what does this take off the table for all the other upgrades that we have to do with our other buildings?
This would be, you know, budgeted for this project and, you know, we budget every project individually.
And facilities is something that we're going to be asking our community partnerships to pay for?
Yes, that was, I think the facilities number I'm getting is from, let me see, that's from our number, not from their number.
Okay.
That $101,000 is our number.
Okay.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that when we're doing a program like this, which I think has a lot of potential, that we're not shirking the other facilities upgrades that we need to have in the district. And I think that was your question? Yes. If this then wasn't get done? So I think that's where Mike needs to look at the budget with Alan, obviously, and determine whether there are some things. I know we're doing a lot of work right now at Preble in the area of technical education to get them up to speed for the construction project, the Habitat for Humanity. And just in general, when you, when I went to Preble last year to look at their shop, I was concerned it wasn't really safe as it could be. So some of those things need to be upgraded because we're using equipment from quite a while ago. So I think that's a big project right now is the Preble piece. So I would say that in all of our high schools, we're really trying to make sure if we're going to carry out the CTE courses, we have the equipment to make sure we can do them properly. So. And then, when, I cannot recall what we were talking about. When do you think you would come back to go and update about this? Because the next time I would like to hear from Mr. Belangi and the career technical and also Mr. Plaiton about how things are going. So when are you, will you proceed coming back to the board to basically update us? Well, I think there's two updates. One, if you look carefully, we're not asking you to approve our moving forward without the dollars from the community partnerships. So I think what we would need to do is make sure that before we move forward, we have the dollars that we know we need from outside of the district to make the partnership work. So I think that would be one update. Okay. And then I think we can come back next year and give you kind of, here's where we're at with a number of students. I think to go back to Michelle's question, one thing that we've learned is when we start something new, just like the construction or the Habitat for Humanity or the Neighbor Works, we need to recruit as well. And we can't just put it out in the course description and expect our classes to fill. So we're going to need to do some legwork to get out and get the kids to know, A, that it's being offered, and B, what is, you know, what type of student do we need? And then C, here's the process you're going to need to go through. So we can update you on that, too. That would be awesome. And that's a great kind of on-the-ground, know what's going on at the school, kind of report that we're interested in here. And we did check in with Mr. Plaiton and he told us he was all in. So be sure you...
He is always all in. He's always up for stuff.
I think it's a great opportunity. It fits with our direction from our building standpoint. You know, you look at the vision cards, you're providing an avenue, you look at our building mission of empowering all students. It provides another opportunity that's a local opportunity, there's a nest, there's a need for it. I mean, the Press Gazette just ran the paper on Sunday, it talked about manufacturing, what percentage of jobs in Wisconsin are, and I think it just, you talk about hands-on learners, and are those some of our more disengaged students? And is this a way to help get the hooks? Is this the way to help provide students with not only those hard skills that they need, but, you know, we talked with manufacturing groups, the soft skills, the customer service, the communication, the teamwork skills. This is another avenue for those hands-on, applicable, potential lifelong skills to get them prepared. They don't have to go to a four-year school necessarily to be successful. Not only are we saying that, but here we're providing an opportunity to allow that to happen.
I think there's a lot of potential at West, well, at any high school, but at West High School in particular, the Wildcats, right? For those of us that attended the new Manufacturing Alliance awards ceremony the other night, there were two, I think, models similar to this that had received awards that evening. And to see the testimonials from both the partners and the school employees about the difference it's made in their students' lives, I think, was great testimony. It really, it really turned some of their lives around and gave them an opportunity. I love the story about the gal who didn't even know how to spell metallurgical. And now she's going to MSOE?
Michigan Tech.
Michigan Tech in engineering because she started in this partnership. And that's after her third rotation of trying something hands-on and new, she realized that's where she wanted to go. And I think it's just one example of a way that it can change kids' minds about what their potential is.
Brenda?
I really liked the one bullet point in here that says, "The manufacturing industry has been transformed by high-precision, high-technology companies requiring an advanced skill set from its employees." And I think, I like that because I think it's important to bring that forward when we talk about this plant, because people who are not in the manufacturing field, I think, don't realize the, where it's gone and the high, highly technical skills that are needed by employees. I know I was at one of the paper companies about 45 years ago and, and the engineer that was taking us around pointed out that there were no people standing in lines. It was all, you know, the machines doing that work, including the delivery cars that would pick up the boxes of napkins and take them somewhere, were driven by lasers. And, and the people that were working were in behind computers and they were watching the machines and how they were working and making sure they were efficient and things like that. I just think that that is really important for us to continue to highlight so that people realize that it's not, you know, I mean, in the past, you used to be able to go into a manufacturing plant without, I mean, I think just with the high school degree, you know, back many years ago. And I think just reminding people that this is really a high, you know, very high-refer high academics are required to be in these fields is important.
And NWTC is sitting quietly behind us for the most part, but they've, it's just another example of another partnership where we've been able to work with them to get our kids' credits, to prepare our teachers. And actually, this one is probably between the three partnerships, our first real community involvement, I think, as well, where we've had the community come to the table with us and say, "Hey, we're in two." We've done kind of the partnership with NWTC and UWGB, but this is our first real time that all three are at the table, which I think is significant.
I just, first of all, I have to express my gratitude to Lori Peacock, who is relentless and really recognizes and is visionary as to how important it is to create this pathway for our students. And having sat in and listened to manufacturers and toured plants, the jobs are really great jobs. They are the kind of job that you can go in after you are skilled and trained and stay for a lifetime. I mean, it's a career. It's an opportunity that's extraordinary. But it's also a launchpad for some kids, you know, they go on to four-year colleges and beyond. So it isn't, it isn't limiting like some people would think. I think this is an extraordinary opportunity and partnership. And again, the New Manufacturers Alliance and Anne and Mark have been extraordinary. NWTC in partnership. I'm very proud to share this conversation about where we've been and the high school folks stepping up. And you really start to look at how, if leveraged right and well, a community can fulfill a need... And you really start to look at how, if leveraged right and well, a community can fulfill a need from cradle to career is really what this is, is a great example. So, starting with, you know, going through the schools and then bringing forward a full circle. Because the jobs are there, the opportunities are there, and the gaps are there as well. So we're trying to close the gaps. And again, to continue partnerships like this will be a way to do that and meet the needs of growing numbers of folks in manufacturing, students needing jobs, and manufacturers needing people to fill in for retirements and so forth. So, well done. I just continue to be very pleased with all the hard work that's gone, and I'm very appreciative.
Yes.
I was challenging myself not to say anything.
It's the air in this room, that doesn't work.
But I've given what Michelle said. I just got some exciting news today that I have, and I don't know if even my staff knows, but we've been working very diligently with the university system to get them to offer a bachelor's of engineering technology, mechanical and electrical field. And this was something that both UWO and UWGB would do. And they would do it by using our labs, because they don't have any of your anything. So we said, well, you can kind of use it. And then when the budget got passed, that money got eliminated, so we didn't know if it was going to happen. Well, they just got word today that they were approved for an innovations grant from the university system. And they're receiving about 1.9 million dollars to run those two programs. So-
We knew that was coming. If you look right.
Yeah, but my point is, is that that's part of the pathway. So, you know, we've got these students starting early on in manufacturing, and we're creating a pathway all the way through that they can stay in this area and frankly, get all the way to the point where they have a bachelor's in engineering technology, if they wish to have that. And so I think, you know, a program such as the one that we're discussing here has got really great potential to get kids in the right place and give them many opportunities to go many different paths in manufacturing.
That's wonderful. I'm going to call myself, the accessibility to the program for students who aren't, don't have the honor of being Wildcats. I think we need to look at transportation options for those students. Because even, you know, as juniors and seniors, not everyone has access to a car, not everyone can get themselves there. I think we need to-
It will. For all of our families.
It does, as we specialize, because we can't have these, you know, it's good to have these programs, and we can't replicate them in all the schools, so we need to make them available.
We, we just set up our first meeting for the task force, the transportation task force. So we know that there's been work done.
And we are piloting some hubs this year, so that's going very well.
We agree.
Good.
We agree. All right, this is exciting. Anybody else want to say? Mark?
I'll just add, then I'll just read what you said. The thing that really gets me excited about this, not, I mean, it's very exciting about teaching our kids how to do machining and fabricating and welding, and we have a shortage of that. That's wonderful. But the really exciting part is, they are going to learn these skills that I don't think they would have any chance of learning until they got to me. They're going to learn that tension of making a delivery to a customer and trying to do it profitably inside, how to deal with quality problems, how to work together to solve those problems. And they're going to learn skills that we really need them to have, those life skills or self-skills. So that really is, to me, is what is the most attractive about the program, and what really gets me excited and wanting to be a part of this, so.
You know, the other thing I want to say, I do want to recognize Mark, whoever. I mean, Mark, both of the program I just talked to you about, I mean, there's nobody in UWGB or UWO that has engineering background. He has built the curriculum for those two programs for them. He's worked and built curriculum on this pathway. I think Mark deserves a lot of credit in terms of building this manufacturing pathway for our students in this area.
I saw him so often, I thought he was working for us for a while.
Well, the bill is coming. Actually, it's one of the most pleasurable things I can introduce to high schools and universities. It's just nice to be able to connect it all, and I think we have a tremendous opportunity.
It's a tremendous group of people right here.
It's a pretty powerful group. And they've, they've put a lot of time in. There are things that sometimes we, we work hard and fast and, you know, we think we're bringing you the best product. But I have to tell you, they've spent almost a year and a half on this already, just vetting everything out. So it's very well thought out, very well thought out.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, very excited.
So glad?
Yes.
Just enjoy.
And now we have enrollment policies and rules.
I don't know how I followed that presentation. I do not have a team behind me.
No, you do not. You don't.
Just me and Kim.
Get a team next to you.
Sitting at the kids' table.
I'm ready.
Okay, we brought forward a number of policy revisions at a board retreat regarding policies that have, need to be changed due to state law legislation coming from the Assembly and the Senate and signed into law, particularly in the most recent budget. Kim is going to talk a little bit as to the process of what we're asking for tonight.
Mostly just so that you understand why we're requesting, if you, if you recall, we agreed that we would do an approval process of one vote for everything except policy when we talked about the change in format. But for policy, you requested two readings, but we're going to start right off the bat and ask you for one reading. Because the statute changes and the things that need to take place to be able to accomplish what's in the policy have left us a very short timeframe. So to be able to communicate out to our parents in a well-intended and well-thought-out manner, as well as be able to communicate again and again, and give them the time that they need to get their things in order, plus make decisions, we need to get going with letters to parents, getting things posted out on the internet, like by the end of this month. So if tonight we can answer any questions you have, and then you can do a vote at the next board meeting, we would be able to start that communication process right after that meeting. And if we wait till December, it'll be too late.
Mike?
What we have here reflects what we discussed, I think, during our two-and-a-half hours of discussion a couple of weeks ago.
Correct.
Okay, no changes?
Nope, we included the governance responses, that we asked you the governance questions. You gave us the answers, and those are incorporated into the policy.
There were one or two minor language changes, but it didn't change substance that you had requested, and those have been incorporated in the policy, correct Sandy?
Correct.
Any other questions or concerns, comments? Nicely done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, over.
Yeah.
She likes policies.
I do like policy.
Except when she sends me a text from Addison about a policy that's coming on Monday, I get a little nervous.
Thank you, I would like to add that. On Friday, I was at the WASB, WSAA, which is the Wisconsin School Attorney Association Conference. And these policies were one of the seminars at the conference. And I told Michelle and Kim that normally when I attend these conferences, I start hyperventilating because I think of all the things we need to do. And I sat through that conference smiling ear to ear, because we are on top of this and light speed ahead of many other districts. And we are consistent with what the WASB and what DPI are recommending for these policy changes. So kudos to the district and to the board for being on top of this and making sure our kids have all the opportunities for enrollment options.
Well, thank you for your work.
Yes, you're welcome. So you sat there with your colleagues with that kind of smug look on your face?
I did. For once, yes, I did.
All right, good for you.
I do have a question. Took me a while to find it.
That's okay, that adds on you a little time.
Thank you, yes. In 423, the one that's participation of non-public school students in district programs and activities, in, under D, on the second page, you have some, you've got, they may participate at the middle school in select activities. And are we keeping that vague so that we can make decisions about that later? Or, I guess I'm, I'm not sure how we make decisions about what the select activities are. Is that going to be school by school, or?
I think it could be school by school, and it could be activity by activity. So there are some activities that we have that there may not be space that were kind of maxed with the number of kids who can participate. So I think what we were trying to do is leave that vague to be able to make those individual decisions at that time rather than having something in black and white.
Okay, and it's okay to have it?
That's consistent with the law, correct?
Okay, all right. And I have, oh, here it is, maybe. And then 424, compare document is the file, page two. There, it talks about, it's the discipline-related criteria for charter school students. Anyway, it just, it said, the second, the second, the end of that paragraph, "For students currently serving an expulsion from another school, we may allow their enrollment on a conditional basis, and those conditions shall relate to the reasons for the student's expulsion." And I guess I'm wondering, under what circumstances would we have a student in our school who's been expelled from another school?
Because many of the schools in the area expel students for offenses that we would not expel students for.
Oh, okay.
And so it's a lot in our district, we would maybe give it two chances or ask for, it would be counseling or put the student in a chance for change in an abeyance program. So we often accept those.
Okay. Can you clarify what kinds of offenses other districts would expel for that we wouldn't?
Yes, for example-
Just one or two examples?
One or two examples would be a student went home at lunch, was under the influence of, drank some alcohol, and came back to school under the influence of alcohol. And so that's been caused for expulsion in a neighboring district, something like that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And that change, Brenda, number three, that you referred to, that was a statutory clarification as well. So that is the reason for the change in that language that you noted.
Any other questions or concerns? Here we go. Thank you. The next item is the choice area between Elmore and Jefferson Elementary Schools.
You had asked us to look at a previous board decision on carving out a choice option for students who are in the Elmore and Jefferson attendance areas. And we went back, this started in around 1993. We went back and, thanks to Terry Williams and Mike Single for having all the records and knowing the history on this, we went back and we looked at the information and examined the information. It appears that about fifteen students currently are attending Jefferson Elementary under the carve-out choice option for the Elmore and Jefferson schools. About four or so requests each school year, it seems to average out. We spoke with Mike about the room availability at Elmore and Jefferson, spoke with Terry about the accommodations under inter-district transfer, the ability to accommodate these requests through our inter-district transfer policy. And we are recommending that the students who are currently attending through this carve-out option be permitted to, continue to attend through the carve-out option. If they have any siblings, their siblings would be permitted to ask for attendance under this carve-out. But effective the thirteen, fourteen, no, fourteen, fifteen school year, we're in thirteen, fourteen. Effective fourteen, fifteen school year, we would end this option, and students who would want to attend either Elmore or Jefferson would do so through inter-district transfer. And based on our current enrollment numbers, we would not see a reason that we would have to close either one of these schools at this time for those requests.
So they get the same option, it just brings them into what other students do in our other schools.
Correct.
Will we then define the school, I mean, will we split that area up and assign them to either Elmore or Jefferson?
The boundaries are already established. They were just given carve-out in those attendance areas.
Oh, I see, so the boundaries are established within that area, they had a choice of crossing.
Correct.
Okay.
The area is actually the Elmore attendance area.
Okay.
It's the Elmore attendance area, but they've had the choice to go to Jefferson.
Oh, I see.
So we would like to bring that back for our motion at the next board meeting. And we will work on a communication plan for those parents as well to let them know.
Appreciate your follow-up on that. Any other questions or comments? Here we go. In the East High School Institute for the Fine Arts Independent Study Senior Capstone Project.
So we're bringing forth a new course for the East High Institute, which is a senior independent study capstone course that will be available to students in their senior year to give them an opportunity to go more in-depth into their area of concentration within the Fine Arts Institute.
And I can give you a little background. Part of where this actually started is that Lucinda and I, and I can't remember who else maybe was with us, took a trip to the Artisan Center that NWTC has over by the art garage. And in our conversations and seeing all that they had to offer there, it reminded us that there are many things out in the community that we could be having our students participate in or take part in versus sometimes everything, people are wanting to use, you know, what can we do with your district? What can we do? But really, we can go out and use their equipment. And they're actually asking us to try to find ways to come in and use their equipment at the Artisan Center. So we started to look at, well, how could we do this? And how can we find a way for students if it's not, if it's not worth their while and they're not getting credit? And then how can we make it individualized enough that what they do at the Artisan Center actually aligns with what they want to do in their career pathway? So that's where it actually started. And then I think from there, we just asked Lisa to jump in and see what we could do from an independent study. And as you know, we're doing capstone projects at John Dewey Academy of Learning as a culminating project for graduation. So this kind of lines up with that. And it wouldn't just have to be NWTC. I mean, there are many opportunities that this could partner with a post-secondary, or a community, actually.
Or community, artists in the community.
Yes, musicians in the community, artists in the community, dance instructors in the community, so.
Mary?
Give me a little more detail as to what this might look like. For example, is it required that there be a community component to it? Is it divvied up in a year-long project? Is it a year-long project, or is it a year of independent, a semester independent study followed by a semester community application? Can I add more detail?
We really designed the course so that it can be dependent upon the students' needs. So we said the students had to complete 180 hours of work experience, or of work, I should say. And how that project is designed to meet that student's needs is up to the teacher and the student. So it may be that one student's needs is to go out and do more things in the community compared to another student, depending on their area and what they want to focus on. It may be more, maybe book research study. So it really is very wide open, and it's not wide open in the fact that we are just going to let them do whatever, but it's to meet that student's needs.
So there's an instructor that would sit down and talk with that student?
Yep.
And lay out their plan. Are you going to do this for a semester, and what does that look like? I would guess most, most of our students would do a semester long. And then how that might look is I may be over at the Artisan-
And then how that might look is I may be over at the Artisan Center for two hours in the morning doing some of their, whatever lines up with what they're interested in. And then back in my classes. And then I may go back after school and put in some time. Because what we're learning with the students is there's not enough time in the day. So what we wanted to do is allow them an opportunity to earn credit even outside of their day in the area that they're interested in.
Well, there's no staffing requests, so my next question is one of the manpower. If you're talking about a one-on-one with each senior wanting to do the project, do we have the capacity?
Well, listen, some of the, and Mike brought up the staffing, I think, in an email back and forth. And I think it's hard to know what staff to ask for because we don't know how many students we're going to have. So some of the staffing to me comes through the management piece of budgeting and staffing with Mark. But there are many times that we have run at a high school, for example, an art three and an art four. And we put them together because there's not enough kids in art three and there's not enough kids in art four, so we run one section of art three, four. But that teacher may only have ten kids, fifteen kids in that class, which means they still have room for six other students. So I could see the student, that instructor being able to be the coordinator of those independent studies. So then we don't need additional staff.
Well, and it sounds like this will evolve and in the near future, we'll see you again.
Sure, because one other thing that we had talked about was being able to help provide an internship locally for students. So this could look like a full-year endeavor, but the first semester could potentially be where it's a true independent study and they're working with a teacher, you know, almost a one-on-one or maybe two-to-one ratio. But then the second part of the year, the second semester, we would help facilitate an internship, like per se, with archetype. So if you have a student that's really interested in graphic design, they've been working at that and have gone through the program and now they're a senior to try to help give them a vision of what does this look like in a real career setting? What's it like in an office setting? What's it like working with a team? That this would be an opportunity for the students to be able to have that. So it's working with our community partnerships too.
Is this something that would be available to every senior conceivably or is it going to be competitive?
Well, you have to be enrolled in the institute.
No, every senior in the institute?
Yeah, for this particular course, you have to be enrolled in the institute. Now, I will tell you that I received an email over the weekend from an art teacher who teaches IB who had heard that perhaps we were doing an independent study. And I think that would be another avenue of being able to expand that. So I think right now we started out because the work started through the East High Institute. But I do believe there are other areas.
I understand, expand that how with IB?
Well, so the IB art teacher
Right.
would like me to come over and talk with her about the opportunity of doing a similar course, which is around an independent study and a capstone project. Because it opens up and allows them the ability to be able to be more specific in what they're doing. So I haven't, we haven't gone there yet, but I just think there are many avenues where we could be doing more independent studies with students that have picked a particular pathway.
I think one of the, one of the pieces, as I sit here and listen, I think the education customization piece is extraordinary and really important. I would want to make sure that the students are adequately supported. And so, you know, you think about a seminar course or some sort of workshop model, something. There's got to be extraordinary amounts out there to look at. I would want you to at least pursue that. I'd also want to know how we will assess these students in terms of the rigor. Because I, I believe truly these can be extraordinary experiences, but I think they have to be well-planned and they're actually, interestingly enough, I think have done well and right. A lot of work on the part of staff as well as students, at least once you get up and going. But I would, I would like to think about staffing for it. I think we would be remiss to say that we could incorporate it in another class. I think that if you truly have kids really engaged and involved, it's got to have some rigor and some significant support. I think one of the pieces that you see at John Dewey is the small ratio of teacher to student. Makes it highly successful. And while we may have, kids are kids. And while we may have brilliant children, they need guidance sometimes and they need, you know, I, I think of my own kids and and they would do, one could set up his own internship and be very comfortable maneuvering the community and getting exactly what he needed and he does that. But the other one would need a little help doing that and they would both be highly successful if given the right support. So I would want us to put some staffing behind it.
And I think we know we need to put staffing behind it. It was really hard to capture what that would look like without knowing.
How many?
You know, one could be in graphic arts, one could be a violin, one could be so.
But if you did, if you did a seminar course and supported it more like, like, what does that stand for?
Local education guide.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Just a thought. And I can see the brain going in that, that's that.
The twitch is starting.
I would offer that this, this opens up a conversation that we should possibly consider exploring in terms of what do, what do words mean? Independent study maybe, maybe isn't quite the right title? Because an independent study would imply a true, true independence. And maybe there is the capstone course, which would imply something that would be more connected to a staffing consideration. I think at, at its heart, what I'm excited about from a teaching and learning standpoint is the exploration into something that's truly constructivist, that's truly inquiry-based, which really reflects the sorts of shifts we're expecting in all our classrooms K-12. But this one really makes it very, very visible and evident where it's kind of that final transfer of expectation of responsibility onto the student who's been equipped leading up to it. And, and so consequently, I believe that the, the construction of a curriculum to stand as a foundational piece for this type of a course will be quite rigorous because it, it should reflect what you can, what you know and can do as a near graduate in the Green Bay area public schools. And I do see how such an opportunity, if we frame it up properly, will start to show up in possibly other spots as we build. And as students can see themselves as moving towards that. And not all students would be interested in that, but it certainly will, I think, find a place if we, if we get it right. I think this is a great spot to start with possibly.
Brenda.
Yeah, you know what, as you were talking, I was thinking you could have a staff person who's a, you know, project-based learning expert. You could have the art students and the engineering students and the, you know, the math students and, and, you know, all subject areas in that class. But walking them through, how do you, how do you set your project up and how do you make sure you, you know, have the rigor that's in it and the background and stuff? And then they could pop out to their content experts in the school, whether it be the art department or, you know, math department and things like that. Kind of like the, the manufacturing plant did at the high school. They sent the students off to, you know, to get those content questions answered. But that way you'd have one staff person that was monitoring progress, you know, and, and making sure that the project was going. And then you'd have to have somebody else that would be the resource person to, if they needed help with, with content stuff. I mean, that would be another model to look at in terms of, that way you don't have to have, every content person doesn't have to be an expert in project-based learning right away to make this work.
Yeah, I think, I think that right along the thought of what we've talked about, I think it was hard to indicate in here. We may only have one student at the beginning who wants to do this. So we have to figure out how to grow that.
Right.
You know, and we have proposals out there for entrepreneurship courses to do that exact same thing, only helping students develop their own business. You know, I mean, so I think there's lots of little avenues to that.
It has great potential. Any other questions or comments? Are you done? Thank you very much. Our next discussion item, marketing education nine twelve curriculum and resources.
Do you all know Lucinda, by the way?
Yeah.
And we know Sarah.
We know Sarah. All right, I'm coming forward to bring you the new marketing education courses. Last, the last two years, actually, we have worked diligently with our marketing education teachers to take a look at what post-secondary options there are within the community within Green Bay, northeastern Wisconsin, to make sure that our students are really aligned to be college, career, and community-ready. So the courses before you, we started with four courses and we ended with four courses, which maintains that rigor within the marketing courses. And we also added within that three opportunities for students to earn college credit. So three of the four courses will be transcribed with NWTC. So you can actually see that on page two, that we were able to add, we had a marketing course and advertising as separate courses. We maintain the marketing course and transcribe it with NWTC's marketing principles course. Our sports and event marketing course, we are going to, excuse me, it was called sports and entertainment marketing and it will be called sports and event marketing and transcribed with NWTC's event marketing course. We have come up with a new creative marketing course, which will be more of a, a little bit of a capstone course and allow students to really get creative and incorporate some of those advertising opportunities that we had kind of, sort of eliminated. And then maintaining our co-op, our DPI skill-certified co-op course, but transcribing that with NWTC's personal brand development course, which we are actually really excited about, as is the NWTC staff to be working with us. So all in all, that is our marketing proposal for curriculum.
Questions, comments?
You? Um, elaborate a little bit on what the personal brand development course is not, because that's, would be a co-op class for us and then they would be, the student would actually be at NWTC taking the class or?
Our teachers, as a district, we adopt NWTC's curriculum verbatim. So we have to align our courses with NWTC's competencies. Personal brand development is only a two-credit course and that's the below-the-line competencies that our students have to get. And when we took a look at our curriculum for DPI, skill-certified co-op, as well as the personal branding course with NWTC, we found that there were, it was ninety percent similar in what we were teaching our students already. So we will be meeting the competencies of NWTC, also the Wisconsin DPI skill certificate, as well as incorporating in those really fun activities that high school students who need to have in order to maintain that relationship with their work experience piece and their course piece during the school day. And personal branding is really, you know, who am I, how do I market myself, who am I as an employee, resume building skills. Really, it's, just like the title says, it was a lot of those personal skills in which to then move forward onto a post-secondary or a career to make sure that they are really on top of being a professional.
Thanks. Mary.
I have a question that, a general question that isn't really specific to this request, but I'm just wondering if we have the investment in textbooks. I read recently that by twenty fifteen, twenty-five percent of all textbooks will be digital. Is that in the district, are you looking at this?
Me? I am. No, I, well, I'll speak on behalf of, of the teaching and learning department. I think, yes, we're looking at it consistently and, and across all areas. And, and part of it is, is how are the publishers ready? And are some of these, these companies putting out materials that align to the, the curriculum and the standards and benchmarks? And then we also have to look at making sure that our students have accessibility to them as well. So I don't know if, if anybody else has any additional comments, but yes, it's, it's always under consideration as we look at.
From what I understand, it's very, very slow.
Yeah.
It is. We are required to adopt the textbooks that NWTC has for their courses. So we are required that way, but some of the vendors are easier to work with than others. When we, for example, when we did business education last year, we had to purchase a classroom set in order to get six years of online resources. So, and I know that, that it's awful, it really is. We were like, we just want the online codes. So the teachers have a classroom set of physical textbooks sitting on the shelf. They have iPads in front of the students utilizing the online resources where they can take them, go with them, utilize them. And that's what the teachers wanted versus the textbooks. So, but it, it's nice to be able to put them in the library if there isn't a technology, a device in order to use that code. So there is still some usability for them, those students that may not have internet access or a device at home. But we're definitely trying to make that transition, but sometimes there's other requirements that bind us to having a physical textbook within that too. So very good question. We're trying, we're trying, especially within CTE because that's what we want to be doing is utilizing more devices, but sometimes we're a little limited.
Any other questions or comments? Are you done or move that forward? Thanks.
I'm going to stay here.
The last one is the Lombardi Middle School Project Lead the Way course addition.
All right, so last year, if you remember us coming to you with Clint Griffith and Ann Barsh, who was the principal at Lombardi, then we added Project Lead the Way to Lombardi Middle School. And this is the first year that we have had that course. And Mike and I met with Mr. Griffith, Clint Griffith, a couple of weeks ago and the course is booming. The students are really doing great. And I actually sat in a course last week and the students were having face-to-face arguments over how to measure different pieces and they had little cubes within them and they, he had a drawing up there, a flat drawing. And they were arguing like, no, I think it's this way and the measurement is, you're wrong.
Face-to-face debates, correct? Yes, properly trained and facilitated.
Right, but, but in time, it was funny because one of the students was like, oh, I, oh. You know, you could see his brain going, he's like, I see where I made that calculation here. You know, and he kind of went back and was like, oh, you're right. And then they got really excited because they were defending how they felt about making the measurements and showcasing what the physical, like the, the one-D drawing versus a three-D drawing. So with that being said, we are adding, as per our plan, an additional Project Lead the Way course for students as eighth graders to take for next year. We wanted to assess the situation and make sure that the seventh and eighth grade course offered as a year-long course in order to align with Project Lead the Way curriculum was being successful and that the students were involved and excited about it. And they definitely are. So this, addition of this course would be verbatim with Project Lead the Way curriculum. Our teacher has already been trained in this because that's where Project Lead the Way kind of lumps things together. So the training he already received last summer in addition to other training he received. And this will be an opportunity for those seventh grade students to take another course as eighth grade. And then it is in direct alignment with what Southwest is doing with a partnership with NWTC. So it's all coming together. It's like we started out this meeting with BayLink Manufacturing, we're ending with this and it's all coming around.
Brenda.
Just so I'm clear, the year-long seventh grade math way to engineering is every day or every other day?
It's every day.
Okay, but then the eighth grade one will be year-long but every other day?
Correct.
How many students do you think will choose that as an elective?
We've got approximately, and I can do the math real quick, but there's four or five sections being offered right now of seventh and eighth graders together. And so of the seventh graders, we believe that there's around thirty-eight to forty-two seventh graders. And so we planned as if two sections would run. But we assume that at a, at a minimum, one section would run at the eighth grade level because there are approximately forty kids that would be eligible to sign up for the eighth grade course.
Our biggest fear was not having something for them. And the longer we allow them to forget that, and then sometimes the ninth grade scheduling is very difficult to, to have two years of nothing related to Project Lead the Way or engineering or even any tech ed-related course. It would be really disadvantage to the students. So we wanted to allow that opportunity for them to take that course.
Do we know what the students aren't taking because they are taking this?
I actually talked with Clint about that today and study halls are, is what a lot of students were, were taking, were, were giving up. of students were, were taking, or were giving up versus.
I was just, I was just wondering whether it was the arts or, or language that was suffering.
Yep, and that's a great question, because Ann and I had that conversation last year about, oh, are we going to see a dip in maybe agro-science or family and consumer science, or maybe even business at Lombardi because of the addition of a year-long course? And they actually, because they had a larger class coming in and more outside enrollments coming to Lombardi, which, by the way, we have actually had some students come from Ashwabanon to Lombardi Middle School, they've chanced in. So that's, that's a great thing. But because of that influx of students, it was really, they were coming out of taking a study hall, so the staffing ratio was, it didn't, didn't decrease in any other elective area.
As a matter of follow-up, too, if, if you'd like, we could, we could look into that a little bit more. I think the more time that we have, you know, this next year when we do the scheduling, that'll give us a little bit better understanding as the kids select and, you know, we get moving with next year, we'd be able to have a, probably a more detailed explanation. Because I think study halls is, is the obvious one, that it kind of shows it. But in fairness, I'd like to be able to look at it over time to find out the impacts on other areas as well.
Thank you.
I would assume there's other tech ed eighth grade offerings that may go away.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, if you look at the, the multi-year plan, that, that's something that, and I'd ask to hear a little bit more about this when you're talking a little bit. You can see that the construction manufacturing plan is mapped out to potentially add an additional one for the year after next. But that goes in line with, we want to make a good determination so we don't accidentally cut both of them off, and neither one can run because of added, 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 which I think is at the heart of the big issue.
And ideally, what we want to do is we want to provide students with the engineering pathway, as well as the construction manufacturing, which directly aligns with what Southwest is doing. So they've got engineering and Project Lead the Way, as well as your welding, metal fab courses. And that's what the construction manufacturing would be preparing you for the home construction, as well as the metals courses. So, but we need to assess whether or not the addition of this eighth grade course would have an impact on that construction manufacturing course. Because there's only so many students to go around.
And just so you know, too, this is offered an opportunity, again, for another community partnership. The, some of the equipment that we brought from Prell over to Lombardi, that was sitting unused at Prell, that is now being used at Lombardi, required some maintenance and some, a, a look at from someone probably brighter, way brighter than I am, but Mark Kaiser brought in a gentleman and they came over in the summer and looked at all of our equipment and gave us suggestions on what we could do and how we can fix some things. And then he had some people take a look at it for us. So again, just another opportunity where we're able to bring in some help from the community and some things right now that's not costing us dollars.
And the VEX robotics system that Clint is using at Lombardi, that is part of the Project Lead the Way curriculum, is really amazing. So if you ever have a chance to, to connect with him and go over there and take a look at it, it's, it's going to be awesome. The students are really, really learning some amazing things.
Any other questions or comments? You ready to move that forward? Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our discussions. Are there any announcements? Brenda.
I just want to remind everyone that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Convention is coming up and registration has opened. And so if you're interested in going, let Sandy know. When do you like to make hotel reservations by? Has the hotel reservations that need to be made?
Probably the middle of the month.
Okay. So, and let her know if you're going, and then how many nights you want to stay, because we usually make reservations at the Hampton Inn, which allows us to stay one or two instead of the required three at the hotel.
Right. That's why we do.
That's why we do that.
Right. Because a lot aren't five.
It's cheap, and then also gives us the flexibility. A lot of us just go Wednesday morning and come back Thursday night, just stay one night.
Right.
So, so anyway, by the middle of the month, let Sandy know. That's the only announcement I had.
Are any other announcements? Here we go. That concludes our work session.
All right. Thank you. I won't turn over the organizational support work session, if that's okay, you do, because there's not anything on the agenda.
Good work, Andrew.
But we're the shortest work session ever. And then we do have a closed session. I'll read that. Full session is scheduled for Monday, November 4th, immediately following the adjournment of the work session meetings. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1925-1C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. And pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1925-1F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal history with discipline, endangering specific persons, extraordinary consideration of specific personnel problems, early investigation of charges against specific persons in the federal statute of rights, which is discussed on the level of the liability of certain individuals who have a personal record of responsibility to a particular person, referred to in such history or date or involves of property or investigations to wit personnel matters. And pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1925-1F, deliberating or negotiating the process of public practice and assessment of public funding, providing a special type of public business, when recommended, with argument and reasons to carry a closed session. More specifically to wit, negotiation and collective bargaining agreements. Meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided by law.
So moved. Sandy?
Becca?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.